One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And with that being said, we'll move over to the approval of the agenda. Do I have any additions, amendments, that anybody would like to present for the board? With none mentioned, take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We have no public comments because we have no public unless any of y'all want to say something. So we'll move on to the discussion agenda, discussion of athletic update. Dr. Jones, you are queued up and ready.
Thank you Chairman Rogers and Board. Typically, as you know, at the beginning of every sports season, I give an update on participation. You can see in your packet that our numbers across the district are relatively healthy in most of our sports. I do have, you'll notice TBD was put as a placeholder for middle school golf. I do have numbers updated for that. So there are eight participants at Pine and Grove, ten at Southeastern, and thirteen at Chestnut Grove. And so, we had a great winter season. We still have a team still participating. South Stokes High School was participating in state playoffs in basketball. They're playing tomorrow night in the third round. And so, proud of them for their run. And they may have a few student athletes that transition over to a spring sport once they're finished. So these numbers, again, may fluctuate just a little bit, but overall, they're pretty pretty healthy across the board. And look forward to seeing all of our students in action this this season.
Okay. It's good to see North Stokes' girls softball is rocking this year there. I could find a field on the JB team. Okay, thank you. West Oaks Tennis Court Project. Richie, I think you're up, and then stay there because the next two are yours.
Good afternoon, Board members. At this time, I would like to update you on the West Oaks Tennis Court Project. You all should have a copy of the project information and expected timeline. Before we sent out an RFP, I consulted with three companies that had experience in this type of construction. Also had cost projections given by each company to give a starting point as far as budgeting was concerned. You can see a list of those construction companies on your information sheet. After we received no interest in our RFP, I was advised that we did not have enough information for companies to make a confident bid. At that time, I reached out to several different engineering groups, and you can also see that list on your information sheet. I was advised that core drilling would need to take place in order for confident bids to be made on the tennis courts. I decided to have an engineering group prepare a detailed construction needs report so that we can more accurately provide bid packets to prospective construction companies. The engineering group was on site last week shooting grades and locating utilities, and we have set March 10th to complete core drill samples. After the samples are examined, we will prepare the bid packets and get this bid out. If and when the board approves that bid, we will award it and get started with a six to eight week estimated completion time, depending on weather. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
How many samples are taken?
Right now, they're looking at half a dozen. That's through the center of the court. They told me the way the land lays there, they would go through the center, be able to tell what the base looks like.
Is that going to affect any of the play?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to affect any play this spring?
We hope not. I can't promise you it won't, but we hope not right now. They're talking six to eight weeks. If we can get this started by May, and the weather holds out, we can do, get it, get it done before they start.
Okay. Well, once they do the core samples, they can patch back over those, right? So it's not really impacted. Right, I mean that's.
That's correct.
Okay.
They can fill the holes back up, literally bring the planned surface back to where they can play on it until we start construction.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, once you get the core samples and you get everything, maybe a bid, I mean, how, are we, is this a project that can happen over the summer?
Yeah, yes. Well, we hope, we hope if everything goes well to have the project done before August.
Yeah.
That's the hopes.
So we can, so we can start back into new school year with the.
With a new court.
Completed and, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, did you have any questions? I know you came in like a blaze of glory, so.
No, I don't.
Okay, all right. Thank you Richie. You want to, let's move on to the school nutrition control or combi oven bids?
Yes. So, Board members, I would like to ask you to look at the school nutrition combination oven bid tabulation that's in your packet. If you remember, we briefly discussed this during a capital projects update last month. And I told the board that Mr. Brown and I were discussing the use of his capital budget allotment for cafeteria tables from last year. Mr. Brown feels that he has all of his cafeteria tables up to date and requested we use his allotment to purchase other needed equipment for child nutrition. I spoke with Ms. Moore in finance to determine if we could do this, and she verified that this allotment could be used for any equipment he felt necessary. In this case, he feels that a combination oven would be more beneficial to his program. This afternoon, I would like to ask first for the board's permission to use these funds for equipment other than what they were designated for. And if the board agrees with doing that, I want to ask them to consider awarding this bid to Singer, who was the lowest bidder of the combination oven. This particular oven would go to King Elementary. If the board approves of these changes in equipment, there will likely be more bid tabulations in the near future on other needed school nutrition equipment. Mr. Brown and myself will be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
I don't think so. The combination oven, is that what this is? It would do multiple, like, functions of.
I'll let Mr. Brown explain that.
Convection or.
He's much better in that than mine.
And then I would just ask about like a priority list. If y'all have a priority list, just send it over as far as other needed items.
Sure, we can definitely put one together. A combination oven allows us to use it as both a steamer and as a traditional convection oven. We have had issues with the steamer at King Elementary. Started the school year, one died. We moved one over there, it died. We moved another one, our last spare one over there, and it died. So they've been running without a steamer. This one has required a lot of work to get in place, and so we're excited to.
All the ones you moved over, were they near the end of life?
Very old.
I mean, it's not like a wiring or electrical issue.
No, 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 no. They were, they were all end of life, and, you know, we definitely have a bit of equipment that needs to be replaced, so.
Okay.
Any more questions?
All right, that's it.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions.
I do, just, just one or two. Have we used that Singer brand or manufacturer at other places? I mean.
That's, that's a vendor, and yeah, we've used them a number of times.
Okay. And you feel comfortable? Now, as far as moving the funds and that kind of thing, this twenty-two thousand, will that take care of all of just the tables? Or are we going to have some other money that if you needed some other things to miss? Knight's comment about, you know, if you needed other things, prioritization?
The.
Yeah, it's fine either way. So the twenty-two thousand will be coming out of money allotted in last year's budget for the tables.
Just for the tables.
Yeah, I think we had fifty thousand allotted for that. So this would take roughly half. And then, like I say, he has some other equipment that he would like to purchase, and we would be back to you guys to get approval for those.
And is this installed just, if we needed to use it in another facility, let's say, you know, can it be moved?
I think about two thousand dollars of that twenty-two was the, them to come out, inspect the power and the water, and make sure the water filtration system was up to date and, and the install. So this piece of equipment could be moved to a different location.
Okay. That's all I've got.
I have no questions. So with that being said, the Board will entertain a motion to move the topic of combi oven fund transfer and purchase to action.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move, that will be action, item B. So we'll move on to the discussion of District Summer Learning Remediation Testing Plan. Ms. Kane?
Thank you. Good afternoon. In your packet, you will see the summer programs information for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and what is required by the state for us to administer, re-administer EOGs or EOCs during, after the end of our school year, which would be May the twenty-third. This year, we will be able to re-administer EOGs for grades three, four, five in reading and math, grades six, seven, and eight in reading and math, and then the EOCs, math one, math three, English two, and for Extend One students in grades eighth grade to grade thirteen. It is required that they have five hours of remediation in the subject in which they will test. And then following that, they may be re-administered the EOC or EOG that is of their course or subject. So within this document, it talks about the re-administration procedures and policies for our district and what the expectations are for our school year. This remediation must be done following the end of the school year. And then re-administration of the assessment is at the very, after the last day of school for students. So I ask you to take a look. If you've got any questions, please let me know. And this plan must be approved by April the first and sent to testing and accountability. If you've got any questions, let me know, and I ask for approval by our next board meeting.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
No.
Ms. Knight? Mr. Robertson?
No.
Mr. Duncan? Can you explain the Extend One? What is that?
The Extend Ones are for students that are on alternate curriculum. That assessment is shortened and abbreviated for those students that are on an alternate curriculum.
And if, so if they're kids that need to go back and to do this, EOC, EOG, will they go back to their respective schools in the summer, or is it? Do we know?
Wherever they're in a current attendance act. And we don't provide transportation for this, so it is a optional option. It is not required. So the parent would have to sign that they would like for the student to be able to retake the assessment following the end of the school year.
And if they don't, then are they held back?
No penalization.
I got you. It's just, so for them to retake it, help me, what's the, the goal is for?
Proficiency. And that's all it would do is help the proficiency of the school. It does not help growth.
Got you, okay. Sorry for the questions.
No.
I'm reading through this as I got it today, so.
Yes, I apologize.
No, no, that's, I'm just, I want to make sure I'm understanding before I approve, if that makes any sense. So that's all I've got for now. Okay, well, with that being said, Dr. Rice, if you would, Board, if you have any questions, please present them. If not, place this on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Summer learning programs. Dr. Roan and Ms. McGee, y'all are up.
Good afternoon, Board. To continue with our summer programming, in addition to the re-administration in your board packet, item E goes over our summer learning for 2025. Our high school opportunities, we're going to have two CTE-based experiences that will be offered for high school students during the summer. One of them is JROTC Leadership, which will be June tenth and eleventh at South Stokes High School. Participants will need to provide their own transportation for this experience, and this is being funded through JROTC. The second opportunity we'll have this summer is Camp Med, and that's going to occur June second through the fourth, and then June sixteenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. This is funded by a grant through Atrium Health. Transportation to Atrium Health will be provided by them. Community members from the medical field will provide hands-on activities for two days of each camp, and then they will also offer our students breakfast, snack, and lunch for this opportunity. Questions about high school? I will turn it over to Ms. McGee for the remainder of the academic updates.
Good afternoon, Board. I just wanted to give you an update of what summer reading camp for elementary will look like this year. Essar was very good to us the past couple of years, and we were able to accommodate multiple grades outside of the legislation for Read to Achieve. However, coming this year, the legislation supports serving second and third graders only. And in order to make that happen for all of our Stokes County students, within the seventy-two hours that is required, we're going to have one location this year. It'll be at Poplar Springs. We'll still do the hubs that we've done previously. If you'll note that I do plan to rotate it throughout the district annually to take the burden off of one school always hosting summer reading camp, but also moving it around the district. So, but with starting this, coming back to only being able to serve second and third grade students, we'll start at Poplar this year, and then we'll go from there in the upcoming years. These are the dates and the times, and I'll be sending out applications sometime this month to teachers to work for second and third grade. Any questions about summer reading camp? I know this is very different than what we've been able to provide the past couple of years, so I'm a little bummed myself. At the same time, we're still going to provide a great experience for those that qualify to attend.
Ms. Bennett, any questions?
No.
Ms. Knight?
Like you said, just a little bit bummed that it is so different. You said it was just scaled back.
So, we've been able to supplement. Read to Achieve legislation changed a few years ago, where the money that we get for summer reading camp under that legislation was only for second and third graders, but we've been able to kind of continues to subsidize that with Essar funding, allowing for other things to be incorporated into it as well. This year, because of that, all the funding for summer reading camp has to come out of that one, that one budget. That includes bus drivers and, you know, all the pieces that make the, the reading camp happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robertson? No questions. Mr. Duncan? One question back at the Camp Med. That is available for all the high school, all three? And as far as, are they having to be in a health sciences class before they can go to that, or?
No, no, it is open to all.
It is? All the grades nine through twelve? Okay.
Yep, yep.
When will advertising start for that? Will that be like all calls going out to parents as well as like something sent home by students? I'm sorry, or just posted on the website?
Since this is grant-funded through Atrium Health, I would need to check with Ms. Langford. She's the one, she's the contact for communicating with them, and when they have all the information, I'm sure she'll push it out to all of our social media outlets.
Okay, thank you.
As a parent who had a child go to Camp Med, who's now a doctor, it was a fabulous experience to, they physically watched surgeries. They didn't assist, but it was a great project. Does that require any board approval, or?
No, sir.
Okay, great. All right, discussion of K-12 academic screener and personalized digital learning platform for 2025, 26. Could you have put any more in that title?
I could not have.
We started to make an acronym, but we couldn't make it say something cute, so.
I love to have lots of words. Now, this is just making you aware that we are going to put out, going to put out an RFP for our personal, our screener and our personalized platform. As you guys are aware, we have used iReady for many years now. I think we shared at one board meeting earlier this year that as where we haven't seen any negative results from iReady, we also haven't seen that significant growth. And we also know that some of our students and teachers had saturated out with iReady as well. So we are looking for proposals for a K-12 because ninth through twelfth is an area we do not have any type of academic screener that we could do a wide sweep to see if there are still any academic concerns. We're going to be looking at math, reading, and science, which is different. We have not looked at science previously. And then, of course, the other criteria would be alignment to the standard courses study, the instructional supports, because we know that no one computer program can replace a teacher. So we want those instructional supports and data for our teachers to help them drive instruction for our students. The ease of usability for teachers, we don't want it to be another barrier for teachers. We want it to be something that they can truly utilize, and they will be part of the process, just like with the math textbook adoption and the reading textbook adoption. We want the teachers to have that voice and see the programs when they come to share their vendor information with our district. So this is just a timeline that we have, a tentative timeline. Right now, I have the RFP with Mr. Johnson for his review. Any questions?
Ms. Bennett? Knight?
You said this is pretty much a requirement by the state to have.
Yeah, it's.
Screener and personalized platform. It's not an optional thing.
Yeah, the personalized platform part is optional. A lot of ti, we have had feedback from teachers over this school year that they have missed that component of it, because it does provide additional resource for them to support the students, especially when there's such large gaps at times in their, where they are. But the screener part of it is something we do need, that universal screener. You'll notice that for K-5, reading is not on there, and that is because the state through Read to Achieve provides our reading screener. The Dibbles, I'm sure y'all have been, are familiar with that. So we felt like doubling a screener for elementary for reading would be a little much. And we have had some concerns with that with iReady as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
So iReady, we won't be using iReady anymore?
Not necessarily. Depends on the bid and when they come and they do their proposals, and what feedback we get from teachers when they do the criteria. It could still be a relevant candidate. It just going through the RFP process.
What, what do you hear from teachers and parents about the iReady?
So I hear all kinds of a mixed bag. I'd love to say that it's just like one way, they all love it. I have one teacher recently say, please bring it back, and then I've had others say, no, I like this better. I've had others say that they appreciate different programs for different reasons. I always say, I, there is, as we're standing here, someone, somewhere is creating something just as good and, and reliable and all the pieces. I think it needs to be what's best fit for Stokes County and Stokes County students' needs and teachers' needs. That's why I want them to have, because they're the ones, the boots on the ground actually using the product. I want it to be something that they feel comfortable with. That's why I look for the, I don't want barriers when it comes to the technology for our teachers. So, but it's a mixed bag, you know? I do, I will say, middle school, they have, they really have, what's the word? Saturated out with doing iReady.
I've heard, of course, you know how that is. You usually don't hear too many, if they really like it, they probably don't say much about it. But the ones that don't like it will be the ones that speak up, and I have had several just tell me they just do not like it, iReady. But that's why I was asking what your thoughts were on it, because you're, you know, you're more involved in it than we are.
Yeah, and, and I kind of hear the same thing that you do, the negatives and, and then some positives. What I've heard more than anything is the absence of not having a, for something that the students continually work on that, that will build their missing gaps. That's what I've heard the most about, not necessarily whether it's iReady or some other type of program.
Well, I think it's good, technology changes like every week almost, you know, it seems like it anyway for me.
Absolutely.
So I think it's good that we look at other, other programs and, and there may be something out there that we like a lot better.
Yeah. Well, and including the science component, because we want to continue to, to grow in our sciences, and so that may very well open the door for some different vendors to submit proposals. So, and we have used iReady for five years now, and it's a good time to, to reevaluate.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duncan? So, knowing, seeing May, you're going to do a survey, that's going to be with all the staff, right?
Right.
So if we sign this RFP, is it for a year, or how does that look?
So with iReady, we did go from year to year, and with our budget, and Lynette, she, that is how we, we have done the last couple of things that we have submitted, is a year to year contract.
Just in case you don't like it, because I mean, they can be a great presentation, and the teachers, I guess, start using it and say, this ain't for me. How does that work?
Well, the problem with doing that is it takes multiple years to truly know whether a, a program works or not.
Got it.
There's always going to be frustration the first year of implementation, because there's PD, there's training, it's a new, it's a new program. But with that said, yes, we typically, and especially with iReady, we did go year to year with them. That, the negative to that, though, is the cost tends to rise every year because the product cost changes. So that's why cost is on here as well, as, as a factor for us. But yeah, that, that's the negative of going year to year.
Got you. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McGee.
Thank you.
All right, next topic of discussion was discussion of Board and work session minutes and recordings. And I put it on there. Board, we just need to find out how we want to accurately reflect our minutes. A lot of times, everything that one person said is, is condensed to one sentence, and then sometimes it's expanded. We just need to find the form that we want to use going forward. The minutes, I mean, the Board policy says superintendent is reviewed for recording for accuracy and completeness. We need to define what, what we feel completeness is so that he can accurately reflect it in the minutes.
Well, I would think accuracy, too.
Yeah. So, I'll throw it out there. I mean, my thoughts are, we use a concise, one-sentence statement for who made the motion, but we also include everybody's concise, one-sentence statement. Send it to the board for review individually, saying, yes, I said that, or no, I didn't. Because we may say a paragraph and only a sentence gets put, and some people, somebody else may say, say a paragraph and nothing gets put. So I just want to clean it up and make sure we are accurate. So what are your thoughts?
I mean, I think that would, I mean, that would be the best way, I guess. You'd have to, you know, own up to what you said, remember what you said, and.
Right, well, now, it is recorded.
Right, right.
For posterity.
Yeah.
It's like social media, you can't get away from it, but.
This is true.
But when we put it in the minutes, it, it was, kind of gets condensed down in a potentially one-way statement. Knight?
I know, what, a few years ago, it was way more detailed prior to what YouTube or whatever, the streaming. So it's been condensed down. And if I'm understanding you correctly, the concern is maybe some, some folks is capturing more sentences of what they said, you know what I mean? It's not a.
When, when all five of us were weighing in, only one sentence was printed by the person that made the motion. Not any discussion from anybody else. So, and I, we can clear this up with Fred. We can also say, motion made by that board member, seconded by that board member, voted on, here was the outcome. For in-depth note, see the video.
You can very much do a, a summary topic of, again, a presentation, the, the votes, and just leave it topical that covers the thing, or, as you talked about, expanded. So far, we, we've been trying to do more of a hybrid to try to capture the main thoughts, but, you know, if there's a minor question, a technicality, or something that's a restated question, we may not have put all that. But we're happy to do whatever the board would like to do to cap, you know, again, to do a topical, or if we could do expanded, or make sure that, again, when you're trying to summarize for people, sometimes it's more difficult to, you know, to, we're trying to capture what we felt the main topic was, but to avoid that, we could make it a total topical set of minutes.
I mean, and I, well, I'll let Ms. Robertson weigh in.
I, I, I think if, if we're going to, if we're going to put a quote in from somebody, then it needs to be quoted in the minutes as to what was said. I think when we try to start summarizing, sometimes we put words into the mouth or into the, into the minutes that are not said. And for instance, on a couple of the past minutes, I went and looked at the, what's in the minutes, and then I went and looked at the video, and I don't see how, what was in the minutes is, I don't see how you generated that from what was actually said in a meeting. So I think if we are going to quote, then we need to do a direct quote and, and exactly what was quoted, and not try to, you know, not try to summarize what necessarily was, in our opinion, what was said. I think you leave it, I think you leave it up for a lot of interpretation.
So if I'm hearing you guys right, then we would go back to how we. So, if I'm hearing you guys right, then we would go back to how we used to do it. And that was like a word for word, you captured everything.
And our minutes were fourteen pages long.
Pages long, yeah. They're, they're lengthy, but you got like word for word. It is, uh, cause you're saying you're trying to do an in-between summaries.
Well, for now, hold on, let's, let's let Mr. Duncan, it's his turn now.
I mean, I think you run into the risk if you are summarizing like what, what you thought my main idea might be different than what I was trying to get across. Just like tonight, I'm, you know, would it be in the minute, every question that I've asked each presenter? Or would it be nothing because you thought it was not relevant? You, you get what I'm saying? I mean, and I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying that i, if the questions I asked tonight were truly captured, you can go online and, and listen to them. And if we did that, two things, I, I, it would be nice if you could capture and say, at minute, such and such. That way, you could go back and not have to watch a, a three-hour meeting. And if, if you're gonna do the summarization and see, to Mike's point, to, to, go back and see YouTube. But, I mean.
What about, how would the board feel? And I'll certainly check with Mr. Johnson about this. If we just kept it to the topics, the votes, and then beside the, the minutes in, in the packet, I don't have it sat in front of me. But like what it says, discussion agenda athletics, you know, are, are at the beginning at the top. We put the link to the meeting and then, uh, at the, put the start time of each topic. And that way, it just stays very much to the topic. But if somebody wanted to go, they could use the link and the, the time to get to the, the discussion if they wanted to listen to that in-depth.
To me, that's cleaner because you, there's no ambiguity of, of, well, you know, Mr. Robertson said this and, you know, and, and paraphrased them versus I said, you know, and, and, and you took it word for word. And, and I'm, I, I don't know, um, I mean, the way she's, uh, when I say Pam or, or you, the way y'all get in the minutes is truly off the recordings, correct? Is that the only?
I, I'm making some notes here as we talk, but most of it is coming directly from the recordings.
I like the idea of, uh, in the minutes, uh, putting the link and then making a, making a note at the discussion agenda or whatever time is that's discussed. So, if somebody's flipping through and they're looking at the agenda, they don't have to just keep fast-forward and then trying to figure out where that starts. Uh, I, I think that's, I like it. I think that's, uh, cleaner and then that's probably more of a true representation of what somebody actually said or didn't say.
Okay, so let me ask this question of Dr. TH. How hard is it gonna be to get a second? We're relying on YouTube and if YouTube, uh, the feed didn't work or something happened, how hard is it to just digitally record a meeting and keep it in perpetuity?
I was gonna say AI will record in three minutes for you.
So, um, since Ms. Pam is out right now, we have been using a Google Meet. And during that Google Meet, I am recording it and creating a transcription of the meeting. Um, it provides that Google Meet that we can save in Google Drive and then also have a hard copy, um, of the transcription of the entire meeting. So, we can certainly continue doing that as a backup.
Will AI, will AI pick up on my Stokes County vernacular? I'm just saying, I mean, I.
Say, Dr. Rice was the one that transcribed it last week, so I'm not sure.
It says, not what I said. Just throwing it out.
I, I will.
AI will simply say, I don't know what he was thinking.
Yeah, I mean. That, there are some errors with that.
Okay. I just wanted to make it in the minutes that I said and it was not what.
And, and again, we're not planning on posting the transcription from this.
Okay.
It, if you get any of my phone calls and it goes to your voicemail and you're, you have an iPhone, it will transcribe that. I promise you, it's not what I said.
I think we've seen some of that.
There are some sitting around here that caught some of my recent phone calls. It is not what I said.
Okay.
I promise you. But it types it differently. Um, so Alabama, Tennessee, North Carolina, it just doesn't know.
Okay.
Um, but what, what we will do, again, we will capture the topics and the votes in the, in the recording. This extra electronic, again, is subject to YouTube losing a server, uh, Google Meet losing a server. Those are always potential there. We will be covered legally. And while I don't expect the other things to happen, we are covered legally if it does. But as long as, again, I, I can't speak for YouTube, I, I don't know what they have.
I think as long as we have two different media platforms, record, two different recording platforms, we have done our due diligence to ensure that accuracy is present.
We, we will do our due diligence with it, uh, but again, I, I can't speak to, to them and their stuff. But we will keep our legal responsibilities with the minutes and we will have the extras on hand.
So, is everybody good with that going forward so that we don't have a, they said, they said battle in the minutes?
I mean, yeah.
You good, Ms. Knight?
I don't. I mean, I guess you're just saying it would say, voted on this, this person voted this way, this way, this way, the topic. And then.
And see this, see this timeframe.
Two minutes, thirty seconds, whatever was gonna go.
So, so for example, just for an example, in my mind, thinking through this, uh, discussion agenda tonight, discussion agenda athletic updates. Dr. Jones shared the numbers for the spring athletics. Um, a board provided a time for question and answer, the, you know, then the next topic. So, a, just a brief thing of what happened. But if they wanted to watch that, they would go to four oh one on the recording and watch that if they wanted to listen to the discussion from the board.
So, we're just putting a timestamp on the beginning of the discussion. And then those that wanna know what was said in the, that traditionally would have been in the minutes, that could have been accurate or not. It's, it makes it a lot freer.
Excuse me, it, uh, I think that the downside to that is, you know, maybe someone doesn't have the time to watch a video. Say, you're a staff member at a school somewhere and you just try to keep up with the general gist of what's being considered in the county and, you know what I'm saying? You're just on top of things. Well, you know what I mean? At least you had minutes with some kind of bulk to them that said, you know, the gist of what was gonna be adopted.
We're gonna be able to take them to exactly when it happened and they can watch it live. Vice relying on an independent interpretation of a thought somebody projected. Because the minutes are not a hundred percent accurate. I say things, everybody here says things, but not all the time does it go into the minutes. So, our feelings, interactions and decisions are not accurately presented in a one-sentence word document.
And as far as written documentation, again, our agenda's posted with the links to the materials that are there. If somebody wanted to glance at the materials, they can go see what is being projected on the screens and what is in the notebooks. They can read that as well.
Okay. You go with it that way?
Yeah, I think that's probably a better way. Um, like I said, if you're gonna quote, if we're gonna have quotes from people, then it needs to be a direct quote, uh, transcribed from what's said from the recording. Uh, not a, not an interpretation of what may have been said or, uh, an idea that may have been presented, uh, we need to put it in as a direct quote.
Mr. Duncan, you good?
I am, I mean, uh, it's so, yeah.
I mean, if so, could you direct Fred to, uh, just amend the minutes as per necessary for that step? Because our policy says reviewing for accuracy and completeness. We know we need to say audio transcribed with time date.
I, I will work with him to see if wording needs to be.
Yeah, just see if it's good like it is, if not, we'll bring it to the.
Well, it says right up above for meetings or portion there in which minutes are kept via audio or audiovisual recordings. I mean, the minutes will be deemed approved when the superintendent's reviewed, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, to me.
I, I think it's probably good, but I'll check with him.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on to.
Do we need to vote on that or is a policy change?
It's not a policy change at this time. It's just, it's a practice change.
Practice change, okay.
Now, we have the great Dr. TH with revision of River Street WAN contract renewal.
All right, good evening, board. We have our C1 WAN internet and this is provided with USAC. So, this is federally funded and then there's a piggyback with the state. Um, we have come up on having River Street for three years. In the contract that we had originally with River Street, it was a three-year contract with the option of renewing for three one-year additional contracts. Um, we were just made aware that we were in our first renewal opportunity. Um, I had my meeting February twenty-fifth with my E-Rate consultant. Um, so he brought it up that we did need to, um, renew, um, the one-year optional contract if we so determined. Um, I do have to have that completed by March twenty-fourth as my deadline for submitting this to E-Rate is March twenty-sixth. Um, I have sent Dr. Rice the, um, the contract that we currently have and I have received the, uh, new addendum. And there are no changes to the service. It would remain exactly as it, as we have had it for the last three years. So, all of our, um, payments and such are the same. Um, I did wanna add, um, because Dr. Rice had asked me to inquire, um, if we needed to add or remove sites such as Pine Hall or Meadowbrook. Um, there is no penalty, um, to, um, discontinue those sites, um, under two conditions. One, the site in question has been closed and is no longer affiliated with Stokes County educational offerings. Or two, the site in question is closed for repair due to damage or issues beyond our control. Um, they are happy to work with us to make those changes, but have asked for a thirty-day notice to make it for a clean, um, billing cycle change. Um, but as we move forward and if we need to make changes to those sites, we can do that with no, no problem, so.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Bennett?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No.
Ms. Robertson?
When will we, uh, rebid the contract?
That's really up to the board. Um, we have had really good customer service with River Street. Anytime we've had an issue, they have been on-site within minutes and a phone call away. Um, they are continuing to build the fiber backbone, um, which gives us greater, um, reliability in our internet services. We've had some discussions that if we do have to move out of this building, we would need to move our data center. Um, we've already had a very extensive phone call with them, what that might look like. Um, the state of North Carolina, MCNC is who manages, um, our data center. So, they actually would pay for that data center to be moved. So, it's a cost that we do not have to incur. Um, in talking to River Street, um, we had looked at a couple sites. Um, Meadowbrook is a very good potential site, West Stokes is a potential site, Lawsonville was not. It was almost four miles away from the fiber backbone. Um, that would put us into some, um, areas that is just not financially obtainable. Um, but they are happy to look at other sites as well. Um, we had just had some initial discussion about what that would look like. We would need to schedule that in the summer as that is a major undertaking. Um, we have to build a new data center. Um, we would probably be down with internet two, three days, um, on, you know, but maybe a week depending on if the move doesn't go smoothly. Um, but we're not anticipating a lot of issues, but just looking forward, those are some things that we have. Um, but River Street again, has been really good to work with.
To, to specifically answer your question, for each of the next three years, we have the option to rebid or we can keep continuing. Uh, we have had great service, as you said, and last time, they were clearly the most responsible bid. So, we have not planned to do it this year, but if the board would like to do it, any of the next three years, we can.
Yeah, and if we do, um, addendum with them the next three years, at the end of that third year, we would have to do a new RFP.
We have to in twenty twenty-seven.
Seven, yeah.
It's when we have to.
And this year, it's probably already too late this year to, to rebid anyway, right? If you have to have it approved by.
Well, what I would have to do is contact River Street to see if they would go on a month-to-month contract while we do the RFP process is what I would have to, to process, start moving that forward, yeah.
Right now, they are willing to stay at the same cost.
Yes, yeah, I have the updated addendum.
Could change lower, could change higher.
Yeah, yeah, but I have the updated addendum and it is no price increase for us.
Good. Duncan, any questions?
I do, I got two, just for my ignorance on, on some of this. Does this tie, have anything to do with cell coverage in the schools?
No, this is the internet service that brings internet to our buildings. So, all the way from whoever, River Street, to the entrance of our facilities.
Does all of our facilities have fiber optics going to them? All of our.
Yes, so we currently, we get, uh, we have ten gig service from, um, MCNC. And then when it drops down into a building, it goes, um, two gig to all of our schools. Um, Bus Garage is one gig and Central Office is five gig. But we do, we, we were approved for ten gig last year, which was an increase due to the internet usage of our, of our, of our buildings.
But River Street can handle that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep.
Now, cause this, uh, goes with you, I'm not trying to interrupt you. Nancy Reynolds is off Surrey. Are they still, and they're contracted through River Street, River Street's purchasing it through Surrey Communications.
Yeah, we pay River Street.
Right, but it, does Nancy Reynolds have the backbone to carry that?
Well, when, um, eighty-nine, um, when that landslide had happened, we had a small disruption in internet. But within a day, they had came out and got Nancy Reynolds back online. And then right before, um, eighty-nine was finished, they put in a new hard line. So, that is all brand-new going out to Nancy Reynolds up through, um, eighty-nine.
But is Surrey able to give ten gig?
That I don't know. None of our schools need ten gig. Um, ti, two gig is plenty. Um, we've just, from MCNC at the state level, we've been approved for up to ten gig. I don't really anticipate any sites ever needing that much, honestly. But we have it if, if we, it's there if we. But I do know River Street is continually building fiber, um, throughout the, the county and the region.
I know when we originally, and I'll get back to you on that. When we originally bid this, they did not wanna touch Nancy Reynolds because that was served by another cooperative. So, I'll just forget I was just moving, Ms. Knight, myself, I think Mr. Robertson, I all went through that.
Okay.
Fun stuff.
Well, our systems administrator works out of Nancy Reynolds, so I don't know if she would work out there if it wasn't reliable.
And if we need it, you were saying if we had, was to ever move from this facility, we would need to move.
Our data center.
Now, is that something that they would help with or is that part of our contract or is that solely on us?
No, MCNC, which is another entity, um, through North Carolina, they'll actually pay for the data center to be moved. So, that, that is a cost we do not have to incur. Um, the big concern is how close to the fiber backbone we would be at the site that we choose. So, we have talked about three potential sites, um, Lawsonville, Meadowbrook and West Stokes. Um, and right now Meadowbrook is the closest, it's about a mile and a quarter. Um, Lawsonville was almost four miles, that's a little too far. Um, West Stokes was about one point seven eight miles, it wasn't too bad. Um, and those were estimates. Um, as we get closer, um, and have a definite timeframe for, for moving, um, we'll get those hard numbers and, and see what that looks like. We also had talked about potentially setting up a redundant center. Uh, but the issue with that is that we would have to incur all of those internet costs and we pay around nine thousand dollars a month for internet. Um, that is actually covered by the state. That's what the WAN contract covers. Um, so we, we have very reliable service. So, um, in this, in the discussion, we, we explored it. We don't believe, and MCNC does not believe we need to set up a redundant site.
Gotcha. That's it.
So, what do you need from us? Just approval to proceed?
Approval, right, mm-hmm, and it can go on consent, um, since I do have the time. Um, I'll have two days after the next meeting to get it in.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to the action agenda. We can't do personnel and coaching because we haven't reviewed it yet, but we can. At this point, the chair will entertain a worded motion for the combo oven purchase with vendor and price tag. Well, first, we need to approve it, the transfer of the funds and the purchase with vendor and price tag. So, I need that in the form of a motion if you so choose.
Uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, school nutrition combi oven bid to Singer an amount of twenty-two thousand, four twenty-seven, thirty-one cents. And also approve the, uh, the transfer of funds that we have approved from last year's budget.
Okay. Of a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in paper, sign and file by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried. And that concludes the action for now. Information and announcements?
Yes, sir. Board, uh, just a few things. Uh, one, I wanna remind those watching online, our next meeting will be on the twenty-fourth of March. That's the Monday after our traditional spring break for our students. So, I look forward to seeing everybody here at six o'clock for that regular session. Our battle of the books, um, kicked off today with group one. Group two and group three will go tomorrow, that's scheduled. Our battle of the books, um, kicked off today with Group One, Group Two, and Group Three will go tomorrow, that schedule is in your packet, with the finals coming up, um, next week at Nancy Reynolds for both middle and elementary schools. And then we also have fundraising, field trip, five, our fifth month PMR, and updated calendars in your packet. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, the other thing under information is a budget work session on Saturday, March twenty-ninth. Can everybody make a nine o'clock, so we can go over our budget? Opportunity, I mean, location to be determined. We can go anywhere in the county, we can go outside of the county, but the county manager has asked for expedited budget to them, and we're gonna need to sit down. I give Dr. Rice, he hoped to present his budget to us at the next, at the next work, uh, at the regular session meeting.
Yes, sir.
Nine o'clock AM?
Yeah.
What was that date again?
Saturday, the twenty-ninth. It's after spring break, if everybody can make it. We're thinking we may go to Meadowbrook, just to, what we're looking at is...
Potentially going to Meadowbrook, where the former Meadowbrook Academy was.
It's at nine AM? Yeah, I'm thinking probably two to three hours while we hash out the budget. Or just go over everything.
You bringing breakfast?
Yes, sir. I was talking to Mr. Rogers.
The one, the one thing I will ask, it is Saturday, uh, keep the directors that are necessary to be there at a minimal.
Yes, sir.
With the exception of transportation, I know you need to be there. Okay. All right. We've covered that, uh, at this time, need a motion to go in and closed.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed? We're in close, thank you all for your work.